All right, we do not have a secretary to check the... I'll just ask Joe. John? I'm here. Jim? Alex? Justin? Jennifer? Lisa is missing, is absent. And Mike? Okay, very good. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the last column, totally. Julie? And Pete? Mary?
Yep.
Okay, very good. We have a quorum. At this point, I think it's time for recognition of art students.
Susan? Excellent, thank you. All right, good evening. Well, I am very excited because I am going to be joined up by some very talented Region 12 students. And I've already talked to them, so they know what to expect. When I call their names, they're going to come up, I'm going to give them their certificate. And then they're going to go over and they're going to show you which one is their talented piece of work. So, without further ado, I would like to call up my friend Addison Cannavaro. Addison? Hi Addison.
Hi.
Can you tell us what school you're from?
Washington Primary School.
Excellent, and who is your art teacher?
Mrs. Manley.
And can you do me a favor? Can you please walk around that giant table and show everybody what is your masterpiece over behind that table? Fantastic work! All right Addison, I'm going to have you stand right there. Is this okay? I'm going to have you hold this and stand right there. You're going to be joined by some other people very quickly. All right, my next friend that I would like to call up is my friend Elizabeth Brown. Elizabeth? Hello Elizabeth, what school are you from?
Burnham School.
Excellent, is it fantastic school?
Yes.
And who is your fantastic art teacher at your fantastic school?
Mrs. Manley.
Fantastic, can you please go show us your work of art over behind the table? And I'm going to have you stand right next to my friend Addison, right up there. And I don't see some of my other friends, but I would like to acknowledge their work as well. So we have Owen Light from our Booth Free Elementary School. And Owen's art is up behind you. He did that beautiful castle you see. So we'll make sure that Owen gets that. From our middle school, we have Carolina, oh, I'm going to say this wrong, Labiano? Labiano, excellent. This is why I have our knowledgeable staff here. And Carolina had done the artwork that you see over there. I believe she has the three pictures behind me, is that correct? The two, oh my gosh. See, I thought that that was high school. So fantastic job by our friend, and we'll make sure she gets that as well the next day. Thank you.
Savannah White, yeah.
And our last presentation is Sidney Videl, who is also a Chapag student. Very proud and continues to showcase her work, so a hand up for our friend Sidney as well. So I need my friends over here to know that what's going to happen is, is we are going to have those presented in the central office. I'm going to keep them for about two months because they're beautiful. And then we're going to get those right back to you. So thank you so much for your artistic ability. You want to go back to your parents? All right, thank you parents! And before we reconvene, I believe Mr. Cava, we do have cookies and some snacks. Should we have the students enjoy some?
Why don't we take a brief recess? Okay, I guess we'll get back to business. That was absolutely wonderful art. And we want to move on to item number C, which is the Ed Advanced Cafeteria presentation, Becky Tyrell.
All right. We want to thank Becky. Yes, please come right up to the podium, the microphone should be on. Becky has been working with our cafeteria staff and Nicole Grant. As we know that we've worked with and partnered with Ed Advanced this year in order to improve some of our work in the cafeteria, some of our offerings. And so I'm looking forward to Becky sharing. So Becky, thank you for coming out tonight.
No problem. Thank you for having me out. I have to tell you, I'm going to confess right now, I was going to wait till later, but I'll confess right now. I'm a board member in Plainville, Board of Education member, and for 18 years, so I like coming to things like this. I know most people probably would be like, "What is going on?" But that was exceptionally cute. Nice, nice way to recognize your students, and it's always great to see board members be able to celebrate that kind of thing because I know it's not always a lot of fun. So I can appreciate that. I did give you a little bit of a handout, just put it there on the tables, about some of the things that Ed Advanced is assisting the district with. We are helping to oversee the National School Lunch and Breakfast programs. They are highly regulated and scrutinized programs. And the federal regulations impact just about every single area of the program. Menus have to be very specific, even the food items that we use are very specific. Staff are required to have training, that training has to be tracked and actually reported in a very specific way. State reviews occur pretty much every three years, and they require a great deal of documentation and preparation. And that's something else that we often assist with. So our goal is really to assist Region 12 to reduce the current program deficit and improve the quality of the program. And the best way we know to reduce a deficit is to increase participation. So we are coming up with some menu adjustments, and we will continue to do so, rolling out new items to see how they are accepted. We are exploring several options from smoothies to shaker salads. And we did try and present the breakfast in the mall area so that students don't have to go and find it. And see if that would elevate our, you know, our visibility there. So we also, I did include what our actual contract language says, the things that we say we will provide. We're also doing a few other things. We do our onsite monitoring here. We had a consult with Love Your Lunchroom, Nicole. And there are folks that take a look at the space that you have and determine maybe a better way to, first of all, make it look appealing, and second of all, look at the flow of the cafeteria. So that's something that we're, as being considered and looked at. We use a Nutrislice menu system. And Nutrislice is a nice online system where you can look at the nutritional value of the food that's on the menu. Since the start of the school year, it looks like Region 12 has had 2,165 views from our menus. So I thought that was a nice thing. And, you know, we really are just trying to do whatever we can to assist you in making the program successful. We are assisting several districts, and we do different levels of service for everybody because we basically do what people need, what people ask us to do for them. And up until four years ago, I, as I mentioned to you, I was a Board of Education, I'm still a Board of Education member, and up until four years ago, I had no idea what the complexity of this program was. I was in a food service director in healthcare. And I made the switch over to school nutrition, and I thought, "Well, healthcare is regulated, how regulated can this be?" And it's really pretty mind-boggling, to be honest. And it is a difficult thing. I know Board of Education members usually don't know a lot about the program and how much support it actually needs. So with that, I'll open myself up to questions or comments or anything you might want to know.
Got two quick questions. Have you actually witnessed the flow pattern in the cafeteria? I asked a couple of questions for people, and they seem to think, again, it's just hearsay, but they seem to think that some of the students opt out because it takes too long to get through the line and eat, and they just don't have enough time.
We actually have been here several times and watching the way it goes through, the way the flow goes through. We did one thing right away, and that is allowing students who were going to get the hot meal to stand in line, and the students that were going in to get something different, they don't have to stay and wait behind the other students. They can kind of cut right through. We split that off a little bit, I think that helped. And we have not seen a lot of really long lines. I know that I've heard that. That was a complaint that I know has come up from time to time. I don't know if it was from other years. The timing does not look bad from our perspective of kids getting through that line. It does depend on what they're serving because certain things are, you know, easier to be served than other things. But it doesn't seem like it's unreasonable.
And what is the consensus? Do the students just don't like the offerings or the taste or...?
It's hard to know. I mean, I think that sometimes you have to do something different. That's what we find a lot of our districts, you try something different and kids will come in just because it's something different. After a while, they get tired of that, you have to do something different again. You know, they're looking for something new, they're looking for, even if it's the way you word things or you describe things. Or the way they look when you present them, that's really important. So you know, as well as I do, that when you go to a restaurant, something comes out and it doesn't look appealing to you, that that's pretty much a deal breaker. So that's the kind of thing that we're working on. I don't know if Mr. Chairman wants to call on folks or...
I was just wondering if you could outline for us some of the changes since you've been brought on that have happened already in the cafeteria? And what your plans might be for what you're looking at this year? Or maybe even further out as far as other changes that you're thinking about?
So the first thing that we did when we came in is we did look at the way the staffing is, the way that the, what the menus were saying, what the inventory that we had in the building. And we're looking at ways to be able to use the inventory we have in the building. That's one thing that I think was, is going to be a little difficult. There is quite a bit of very specific things, and we have to figure out a way to use them. So I think we also looked at the menu themselves, made some changes, not a lot. Because, to be honest with you, we work with the staff, and we sat down right with the cafeteria staff, and we said, you know, "What do you think, you know, what kind of changes can we make that are going to be good? What kind of things would you say, 'Don't take that off our menu, the kids love it'?" Because we want to make sure we're working really cooperatively with them. And as far as changes that we've already made, I think we have made a little bit of a change in the way things flow. Some of the placement in that, in the kitchen itself. And even some of the ways that we're selling à la carte items. Just lots of little things. And as far as what we're looking forward to, I mean, we want to make sure that we get the participation up somehow. So we're going to look and see, we're going to keep offering things till we find out what it is that kids like. We can also do some things where we do free samples too, of maybe a new item. So the kids, because kids don't want to come in and eat something that they have never had before, and they're investing their lunch in it. So sometimes we come up with a new item, we can do samplings and things like that. That kind of gets kids interested in coming in and trying the meal.
Pete?
Did the superintendent do a parental survey? I mean, first place, I'd go to the parents and find out for the parents what, the kids talk to their parents, what problems are they having with using the lunch facility? I would certainly do a letter or some kind of survey with the parental community and find out exactly what the parental community is hearing from their children, and then you can always forward it to this lady.
No, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think things that we've heard have been more of the conversations in passing. I can tell you more of the anecdotal, but I think you're absolutely right. In order to quantify and see if we've made improvements, a survey may be very necessary. So I think that's a good idea.
And if you'd like, Megan, I can send you a survey that we've done with other parent groups. We've done that for parents in other districts. You can send it out, and you could change it, put whatever, you know, whatever you might like on there.
Jim?
It's been a while since I've eaten in a cafeteria, so I, is there a way to get a sample menu of what it is that they serve? Because, and what those changes are that you've added on? Because I just think it would be, I'm a visual person, so for me to be able to see what is a normal week of what is?
So, to be honest, all of you could go onto your school website and just click right on there, and it'll, the lunch menu comes right up, and it shows you for the whole month what the menu is.
So the menu hasn't changed a lot, so there's still a hot lunch, and then is there sandwiches? And then a salad, and then other snacks?
Yes.
Okay, and so the snacks haven't changed either. I'm just trying to get an idea.
Some of the snacks may have changed a little bit, but not a lot.
So has there been feedback that, has there been any feedback from students and/or parents? I mean, do they get a sense that there's been a huge change, or do they not even realize it?
I think students know there's been a change. I don't know about parents. But I think students know there's been some change just because we changed a little bit of the layout in the cafeteria and in the serving area, I should say. And that, I think, you know, kind of gets their attention. Move things around a little bit, and we would like to do that a little bit more. So, you know, this, in November, we're rolling out a couple of shaker salads, very specific. One's a vegetarian option, and the other one has turkey bacon in it. So we're going in two different directions.
And then the other question, actually, another one, is that how is the breakfast cart? Is it been a success? Have you seen a lot?
Not a lot of success with the breakfast cart. But one of the things that we also think is that, right now, it's just a table out there. You know, if we could find a way to make it look a little more inviting, you know, that's something that, I know we've had some conversations. Do we want to invest in a specific cart for that area? What if we invest in that cart and then it's not something that really works? If we get something that we know we can use in another space, that might make sense.
Are they allowed to eat in that area in the mall? They are.
I'm not sure.
So they can bring it down to their homeroom. So they can't buy breakfast and then hang out in the mall and have their breakfast? Right. They want to go to their homeroom. Of course, I always think, "Oh, make it social, like have a coffee bar and that kind of thing," because that's selfishly what I would love. So, a place... I'm just saying, like a smoothie bar, like a little section would be fun, I don't know. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
So, and I bet you the smoothies in the morning would be a popular. Again, selfishly, I think that would be a big hit. Come for breakfast.
We, you know, what we try and talk about is, what do kids expect when they go somewhere else? You know, we don't want it to really look like school food, we want it to look like every other place they might go. So, and that's a challenge because of the space and because of our regulations, between the two things, it's a bit of a challenge. But it's not something, you know, insurmountable. It does take time, I will tell you that. You know, I think we didn't get into the situation we're in right now real quickly, and it might take us a little while to get out of it. But, you know, we just keep working with new ideas, and I think the survey ideas is definitely something to look at, too.
Okay. Any other questions? It appears not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great rest of your meeting. I won't stay. I'm not that creepy.
Nicole, the question was asked if we are going to have an update at the end of the year. And I think, as you've been working very closely, and I do have to thank Becky and her partnership, and her and Nicole working together and in concert with the administration and letting us try different things for failures. But I think that a report would be appropriate to say, "Here's what we've learned, here's what we're changing, and how we go forward." But Nicole, anything you want to add on to that?
No, I had planned to update the board well before the end of the year. I'd like to see where we're at the halfway mark. Maybe after Christmas break, we can run some reports and see what our sales look like compared to last year. And then we can continue to look at different options that we have available to us to continue to improve.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is the trip to Quebec, and Heidi Adel, Madame Adel.
And I do want to thank Mrs. Adel for even wanting to venture outside of the United States after the Mexico trip. So, very much looking forward, but thank you.
So, pitching this trip that we've taken a few times before, it's not new. If you really want to see pictures, I have a slideshow of one of the previous trips I'm happy to share with you. So the, I think you all have the handout. Basically, the trip is in February. We picked February because my very first trip was in April, and it wasn't warm enough to do anything fun. And it was too cold to do anything fun. Let's just say that. It snowed afoot, and the girls were all in sandals, so February, things are made for being in the snow, it's fantastic. And we pick carnival time because there's a big celebration happening at that time. So the dates that we chose are the beginning of carnival. That way, if something goes really wrong, we could possibly, you know, snow-wise, if there's a snow date, we can still go a little later. There are, the dates are February 6th through 9th, and the description of all the events are in here. They're not set in stone, but this is what we had picked last year. Last year, we didn't quite have enough students. We had about 20, and then some people were getting cold feet. And then the price increases when you have kids who start to drop out. So we aim for 25. The price range is around 900. It sounds expensive. The first time that was said to me, I thought, "Oh my goodness, no." But they do a lot more than any normal family would do in four days, so they really get a lot out of it. It's also, the students stay with host families, but they stay with a friend. So they can room with one or two other people, they choose who they feel comfortable with from the group. And then they get to live in a family's home. And these families are vetted through another organization. All the families have children, so they kind of get to see what life is like living in Quebec versus staying in a hotel with four students per room and watching TV all night, possibly. You know, it's a lot of culture. The events, we try to mix it up in case there are students have gone before, but there are events that we do every time, such as the dog sledding. We do the Ice Hotel, the carnival, of course, Sugar Shack. There's always a few cultural things. There's a really beautiful museum in Quebec City. I tried to go there, I think last time, last time I was there anyway, they were under construction, so looking forward to that. Civilization Museum. And it's just absolutely beautiful. If I have any other, oh, fundraiser-wise, the American Legion in Washington is gracious enough usually to host a spaghetti dinner for us. So that's one we'll do definitely. Unless there's another Chapag organization that has already booked it, but they're usually pretty good about squeezing us in. I proposed to the students and to the parents to do an individual fundraiser. And some years there are takers, and some years there aren't because it is a lot of work. And some of the kids don't want to sell something, and then, you know. But if we do an individual fundraiser, at least the kids have an option of raising money on their own towards the price of their trip. And of course, we ask the Student Project Foundation for a sponsorship. So they usually decide that, we show them the itinerary, and they pick out one event that they kind of think is cool, and they sponsor it, and that brings the price down a little bit for everybody. And that's about all I have to say. Well, I would really love to show you pictures sometime. They're really fun, and the kids, I think, have a really memorable time going. Open to questions?
Well, I just wanted to start by saying that I think it's a tremendous program. I had a daughter that enjoyed this program, and the family stay and everything was just a marvelous thing. It was a wonderful family she stayed with, and it was just a tremendous opportunity to go abroad and maybe even practice a little French. Having just returned myself from Montreal this past three days that I was there for a conference, I think it's an exciting thing to go up there, and I think they'll have a great time. So I heartily endorse this. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I think someone wanted to say something, and I stomped on it. Go ahead, Alex.
You mentioned fundraisers, et cetera. Is the $900 estimate after the fundraisers or before the?
No, this is the price from the tour company.
So if there's fundraiser, I mean, it's going to be about $22,000 if the fundraiser raises?
Yeah, it's not...
A thousand dollars?
Even if, like a spaghetti dinner, if we're lucky, it's $1,500 or $2,000. So it's not a huge amount depending on it. There are sometimes gracious parents who waive their fundraising money so that there are families who, you know, profit from it more if they need to, which I think is really nice. But, and we have found ways in the past to look for scholarships. And the, what is it, the community foundation asks for their scholarship. The timing isn't always right. I have to check when their applications are open. And if it's right, we'll do it. If it doesn't work, and that has brought the cost down as well.
Does the speaking of French come into this at all?
Well, it does because a lot of the French, a lot of the families really don't speak French. And the kids, I mean, English, sorry. Get it backwards. The children in the families don't necessarily speak English yet, or they're learning it in school. So some of the most memorable experiences the kids have, I mean, our students have, is interacting with the younger children in the family. So definitely, and when you're in Quebec, you have to speak French. Even there are people who speak English, and that's why really I opted for the staying with the families because it's just a different experience than going to a hotel.
Anyone else? Okay, we have on our agenda tonight under action items to consider and, if appropriate, approve the Quebec City, Quebec, Canada trip, February 6th, 10th, 2020. Do I have a motion to move that up to the present time so we can act on it? Is there a second? All those in favor of moving this up on the agenda for action now? Please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Okay, now, let's consider it. Do I have a motion to approve the Quebec City trip? Moved? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right.
I'll just say one.
Yes, please.
Quick thing, because I'll just piggyback what you said. My daughter went to Quebec, and actually, it's a perfect tie-in because she was just talking about how she wants to study abroad now at college because she had such a wonderful experience in Quebec, and it was something that stayed with her. So I'm just thrilled that we're able to offer this opportunity to the students at Chapag. So thank you, Heidi.
Yeah, and I wanted to add that going at carnival is really a tremendous time. That's, it's really exciting up there. I've been there for that, and it's absolutely exciting. So that's wonderful. Okay, any further comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Done? All right. This is the time for public comment on agenda items. Is there anyone from the public who wants to comment? I don't see anyone, so. We'll move that off. Consent agenda, there is one thing on the consent agenda, the board meeting minutes of September 30, 2019. Does anyone wish to withdraw that from the consent agenda for discussion? Otherwise, hearing none, that will then be adopted. Okay. My report. I mean, what else are we talking about with this gigantic $35 million construction project that we're in the midst of? I mean, some things are moving along quite nicely, some are moving along quite slowly. Really is a problem with some materials that have been late, and we're working on it. But we expect to have the greenhouse shortly. We expect that we will not have Building A until November. That's the shops area up there, which we had hoped, we really expected to have in September. But we have run into a glass delay, and again, it's, we don't know what the problem is. We just know that the glass isn't here. And if it doesn't arrive as scheduled tomorrow, they're going to put in plexiglass, and they're going to leave that in place so they can close in the building and get a temporary certificate of occupancy because it's almost finished inside. There is an electrical issue that had to be resolved. It was a design flaw that has been, they found a solution for it. And that should not delay our opening. It's really the glass that's causing the problem. Closing the building in is what the issue is right now. So we've got that going on. Building F continues working, although not as fast as we'd like. And I think it is likely that may spill over a couple of days into what I'm calling December 32nd and their 33rd before that's ready. But that, that seems to be going. We had an opportunity that came up. It was a discussion of how best to provide accessibility to the outdoor riding ring. And one of the things that I didn't like, I asked how the, a person who is, you know, not able to, you know, in a wheelchair, you know, how would they would view this? And the idea was, the design was they were going to view it through the fence. And I said, well, does that mean we need to take some fence slats out to make it more viewable? And the answer was no, we could do that, but we're not sure that, if that's going to be the best, most workable thing. So over the course of it, I said, we need to figure out a solution to raise the level of viewing so that everyone can see over the fence. And the net effect is, is that that was going to be a very expensive process because you needed 100-foot ramps on either side and, you know, all kinds of different hold, handhold things and everything. And then I spoke to the superintendent and I said, you know what? Why don't we just change the grade and see if we can do it that way? And so I called up the landscape architect and the first thing he said to me before I could tell him, my idea was why don't we change the grade? And that's what we're doing. And so for very little money, we're going to make sure that we have even better accessibility than the plans originally called for. And I think that's the kind of thing we have to do because for me, I just felt it was not, the proposed solution was not acceptable. And we came up with one because we thought through it. So there are things like that that we're even still tweaking the plans as we go to try to get better visibility and a better experience for everyone. But the project will be finished one day soon and we will have every aspect of that, of that rolling. There are a few more animals that have made their way into the building, although I didn't see them because they, they came after I was last in that end. And that's more or less where we are. We're, we're moving along and we're anxious to get this project finished by the end of the year. So that's, that's more or less where it is. And I think as far as, as, as other things, I think it was great that we got to see the, the children tonight and the art. I think that's really what we're here for and I think that's, that's important. I'm glad to see that we're, that we're, we're doing that. So I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for her report. Will, Mike?
Just ask a quick question. I know, Megan, I think in one of your updates, you had come up with a date, kind of an open house date? Are you talking about that? Okay.
Oh goodness. Well, I, I'll leave that to the end so that way I can finish nicely there. The suspense will be there. But we do just quickly some athletic updates. As you know, we had our homecoming games under the lights. And I think that was really painstaking for Matt Prachi because the wins that we were trying to figure out and how to make certain that everybody got a chance to shine under the lights, but he really did an outstanding job. So it was raining cold for our field hockey girls. However, they just, they did a fantastic job. So to say that our field hockey team, they did very admirably, but it was a 1-0 defeat against Joe Barlow, but they're not typically within our league. So it was a stretch and to see our girls wear toe-to-toe was absolutely outstanding. On Friday, our girls soccer team was victorious in their home game against Gilbert High School with a 5-0 victory. And also our boys, theirs was a very exciting game. It was 1-1 and in that late goal, they beat the Yellow Jackets. So kudos to our, our Friday night lights game. So also on Friday's Berkshire League Cross Country Championships, we have three Spartan runners who earned Berkshire League All-Star status. Senior Isabel Eddy earned seventh place. Sophomore Elise Frau earned ninth place. And our senior Jade N. Cornwell achieved the All-Star status with his fifth place finish. So they're carrying the Chappagh team jersey well. Our cross-country team will be heading to the CIAC State Championships on October 26th. And our field hockey and soccer team still have a lot of regular season play, but their final contests are going to be scheduled for November 6th. So this point, our spectators need to bundle up, but we're still have a lot of game in us. We do want to congratulate our PR that has been happening in our district. The CAE had announced, we won the award for excellence in education communication with our Chappagh experience. That was our YouTube video that showed and had the students talking about what it was like to be a Chappagh student. It's one of my personal favorites. But in addition, we also got honorable mention for our year in review. So to say that right now, the work that is getting done is being recognized. We continue to try to showcase. We did a lot of work internally, but I think, and this is what I'm hearing loud and clear from the board too, we've got to move towards that sharing our great news to sources beyond because we have a lot to showcase. Our administrative team worked with the International Center for Leadership in Education, the ICLE. We reviewed our goals. We looked at our mission statement and trying to determine as we're working with our long-range planning to make certain everything is being layered together for what do we really want a graduate from Chappagh to look like? And what are some of our goals? We do have a year-long focus with our staff on lesson planning. But planning in general is happening all around us that we want to be thoughtful in how we're choosing lessons, how we're presenting information. But we're also making certain that our staff's evaluation are aligned with, we call it domain two. It's really a focused part of the teacher evaluation. So everyone knows that this is coming back around. We really are making certain that what you put into the students, they're going to have better outputs. So we're doing a lot of that. So our theory of action is, is that if we use our student data formatively to plan our students' cognitive engagement and target instruction, we will optimize student achievement. The end of the day, we want our kids to achieve. And if we do better every day in our classrooms, providing better questioning, our kids will be better thinkers. That's the long and short of it. So right now, the administrative team has been challenged. They have to create a calendar. How are they implementing this? What are the action plans and coming back around on that regularly? Today, the Chappagh PTO, working with Michael Croft, put together a parent night to talk about students' cell phone use in the building. It's one in which we recognize that in as much as it can be, an enhancement is also a distraction. And so recognizing what are the appropriate times to have it and really making certain that we're putting healthy boundaries on our students here within schools. So that was happening tonight, but it is one in which the administration also met with the teachers so we can also talk about how do we enforce and support it without it feeling like it's a punishment? So they know they're valuing those social interactions that are happening right there around them. When they go and start texting when they're in the cafeteria, they're missing some key times to socialize and become part of the society. Additionally, we have opened the entrance doors by the parent drop-off circle. I know that that was something that we had talked about a great deal. We were able to put in, there's daily supervision that is provided outside the doors to make certain that we have the security in place. I can also tell you, there was another reason this had happened because we do need to remind our families, it is unlawful to pass a school bus. It is $450 every school bus you pass. So when some of our parents have passed all 15 school buses, don't worry, we're making that a math problem for our students to figure out and they can hand the bill to parents. But to say to you, it is important, but for us, we are having that drop-off circle. So that way, we are promoting, we were able to make it happen. And I appreciate the patience of everyone as we made certain we could secure the site. So we do have our homecoming dance that will be coming up on November the 8th for our students. But in conjunction, because we had our homecoming one week, we have our homecoming games, we have our homecoming dance, we are going to have our housewarming party here at Chappagh. And so what we will do is we will be opening up the school on November 16th. We understand we are still under construction, but it is our hope that we can start to showcase what is happening behind the construction walls. We have a lot of curiosity. So what we'd like to do is have a Saturday afternoon, we'll give a tour, we'll have some refreshments. People can look around, peek behind the curtains where we're able to. We have some areas that are still, you know, cordoned off, so we want to make certain that, no, it's on the 16th, it's the afternoon thereof. Yep, no, he was just looking at me like, yes, I have the, I, I will be coming back from the CAE conference running into this. But yes, that is, that is our goal. We've, we've kept the, the public waiting and in talks with ONG, they feel that we will have enough of our areas turned over that we can really give a true tour of what's happening. So, well, see, there we go. Now we're, we're getting the pressure on them. So, so with that being said, a couple of notifications I want to share with you. We do have our seventh and eighth graders who will be taking a field trip to the Hispanic Flamenco Ballet and that's in Tarrytown, New York. And that will be happening on November 12th. So our students have a chance to experience some true Hispanic dance. And also we have our students in ninth through 12th grade who will be going for a campus tour of UConn. So that will be happening on December 2nd. So we are excited to get our students out and about. We have a couple of personnel appointments. We want to welcome Edward Bremer, who is our JV basketball coach. And just so you know, when I did interview him, when he sat down, he was still taller than me. And also we welcomed Joanne Kelly back to Chappagh. Joanne had helped us out in the library, had gone and done work in order to get her certification as a school counselor. So she is also a former parent of Chappagh students. So to say we gave her a welcome home, we are excited. She rose to the top with her calm demeanor. We kind of liked that little bit of no nonsense, but still feeling really supportive and that was really important to us. So we know that she's going to really help us out in the counseling office. So that concludes my.
Is she going to continue as coach too for tennis?
Yes, she is.
Jim, we were talking about the sports. Have you seen any, if you know, any of our agri science students, joint sports teams, out of town, agri science students?
Not our out of towners, yes.
No, okay.
We have let our students know that with our late buses, and this is with the help of Nicole and coordinating with All-Star, we will bring them as far as our buses can, you know. So if there's a drop-off spot that is closer, for example, you know, in our turnaround, we do loop around New Milford. If we can get them close to home and we'll work with our parents, we have certainly made that known to our families so they're not traveling as far. But right now, we do not see the participation.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item I have on the agenda is the treasurer's report.
Yes, I had the opportunity, since I've been treasurer, for the first time to go to the central office and review all of the invoices and payouts. And I was certainly amazed that the, the checks and balances there are. And everything seemed in order. I, I had also had, I also get the updates about the building committee. So a lot of the payments were to the, to the ad construction, but, so I had seen some of those invoices also. But yeah, they really do a good job down there. Helen Yurzinski especially, she happens to be a neighbor of mine also. But it is really quite a, quite a process and quite a, you know, I was heartened to know that the money is pretty well accounted for. So we also at the operations and, and, what are they calling it now? And, and, yeah, the finance portion of the operations and, and facilities committee. We're awaiting, and we've talked about this with the policy, we're awaiting a monthly report. And that report is also generated quarterly. So that will also go to the towns for selectmen. And I believe the, is it the board of finances in all the towns?
It gets sent to all the towns. We'll likely just send it to the same townspeople that get our invoices because they are the ones who get the financial reports from us in the past. But now it will be done quarterly. They didn't, they weren't always on a quarterly schedule and that's new by statute.
Long story short, I don't know how the budget is tracking because I haven't seen it, but I think we're going to see it pretty soon. And, and I know we're going to discuss it at the, you know, next committee meeting.
Okay, thank you, John. We'll move on to committee reports. CAE, Mary?
I guess the big thing that's happening for CAE is the convention that happens November 15th and 16th. What time are we going to have the housewarming? Okay, so as far as I know, Lisa and Greg and I are the only ones going unless somebody else has signed up in the meantime. I'm kind of disappointed because it used to be that the CAE convention was held in Waterbury. And we all, almost all went. And it was, it was a lot of fun and it was very, I got a lot of information out of it. A lot of things that we discuss, the roots of it were taught to us at this, at the CAE convention. So I really wanted to go and that's why I'm, I'm going. But it seems very odd to me that they now have the CAE convention in the corner of the state that takes us probably almost two hours to get to. So I, a lot of the things, presentations that they make that I would like to go to, I don't go to because it's two hours away. So I'm not happy about that, but we used to all go and it used to be a lot of fun too. But I will go and I will see what I can bring back to you. And Lisa and I are going to have a lot of fun and we'll include Greg, don't worry.
Okay, good. Mike, curriculum and educational programming?
Sure, we met this evening and we started with a presentation on the, an overview of curriculum planning in Region 12, specifically through a electronic platform that we use called Rubicon Atlas. And I guess on the same theme that we were talking about earlier when, when John was saying how impressed he was by the, the level of attention and detail on our financial side, I think the same thing is going on in terms of curriculum and instruction in the district. This is not a new program, apparently for, we've been running, using this platform for about a dozen years now. But what's impressive to me is that each year, our administrators and our teachers are refining it. They're adding to it. As teachers are developing great assessments, for example, they're adding those to the online program so that all of that is memorialized. Nothing is, is really lost. Certainly, teachers have the, and administrators have the ability to change and modify if they wish to. But I think it's just such a great treasure trove that is easily searchable so that if you're a new teacher, for example, you've got ways to look at, you know, what are some of the skills that are, are being used in other classes besides the ones that I'm going to be teaching at other, every grade level? If they wanted to, they could be searching on a K-12 basis for specific skills, for specific objectives. And everything's tied into state and national standards, which is very impressive. We also had an opportunity to go through a number of policies that you're going to be seeing in the near future, including bullying, suspension and student records. And one of the policies that we talked about this evening is the graduation calendar. And you'll be hearing more about that later on this evening.
Okay. In advance, Jen?
Well, I unfortunately did not go to the, my first board meeting because I had bronchitis that week. So I did not want to cough all over everybody. So I'm looking forward to going to the next meeting so I can get my feet wet. So I'll have my report then.
Okay. Finance and operations, Alex?
We have had two meetings so far. We had one on September 23rd and the other one on October 7th. We dealt mainly with two issues. One is the capital plan. We revised the, not revised, we edited the old, old. We revised the, not revised, we edited the old, old plan of issues that needed to be dealt with and projected costs. And, because a lot of it had already been done over the, over the years as part of normal maintenance. The new list came out, after the first meeting, we authorized Megan and Nicole and Don to go back, work, massage the list, come back with what they thought were the critical items, and some not quite so critical, but all the items that needed to be dealt with. And then at the second meeting, we reviewed that list and authorized Don, basically, to go out and get some estimates. Not get hard bids, but get some, some solid numbers, so that we knew what we were talking about. In that vein, we decided the December 2nd meeting was too far away, so we've added another meeting to our schedule for the 28th of this month, at which time we're going to have some numbers, be able to put together a plan, and present it to you all. The minutes of both those meetings are available online. If anybody wants a copy, I made copies, wasted a lot of paper doing it. The other thing we talked about were policies. And several of those were going to be dealt with tonight. Nicole did extensive work on these policies. Budgeting policies, audit policies, vending machine policies, and this policy that John referred to, where we now have to file quarterly as opposed to annually our expenses and revenues. So that is basically it. Our next meeting is October 28th, it's 6:30. If anybody cares to attend, feel free to sit in.
Thank you, Alex. Labor negotiations, Jim?
Okay, the board is about to enter into negotiations with our teachers' union. This is our largest union. It certainly has the biggest impact on our budget, and quite frankly, the three towns' budgets. So it's a, it's a, it's a big deal. Megan met with our attorney, I was unfortunately unable to make it, but met, I think went over some language issues that we may look at and introduce. We're still trying to work out an initial schedule for our meetings, which will likely start in November. For those who are unaware, the state stats, by stat, by state statute, excuse me, sets dates by which certain things must occur. You start negotiations, if you can't reach an agreement, you go to mediation. If you can't reach an agreement, you go to arbitration, which has to happen so many days before the approval of the budget. So it's statute-driven. In my experience in the past, we've had good negotiations with the teachers, for the most part. We've been able to reach agreement, sometimes we go to mediation, but we're looking forward to it. So it's, it's about to start, I would say, in November, I don't know if Megan wants to add anything. All right, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Questions?
Correct, yes. Typically, typically, yeah, the answer's yes.
Haven't gone to that.
But.
Sitting in on the negotiations is enlightening.
Typically, there are ground rules, which we have not signed yet, but a typical ground rule is that there's only one spokesman for each side. The attorney, they have a, a union representative, and then their leader, and then typically, it would be our attorney and me, since I'm the chairman of this committee. But every, but the board, members of the board are welcome to attend.
Okay. Strategic long-range planning, Julie?
Yeah, the Strategic Long Range Planning Committee met for the first time on September 30th with Pete and Lisa, and then Teresa and Megan from the administration. And we started by taking a look at what our most recent long-range plan was, which was dated 2012 to 2017, which was that massive amount of work that Jonathan Costa had led us through, and I think some people on this board may have been part of that, because many community members were involved at that time. So we took a look at those goals, many of which seemed really outdated at this point, because so much has changed since then, especially with agri science. We also looked at the Sherman School Strategic Plan, which I think Megan thought was a good format, and they had done a good job internally with putting that together. So we looked at both of those, we came up with three sort of broad goals, which we need to, of course, refine and probably make into smart goals and put into a nice format. So we'll work on that at our next meeting. We also talked about marketing, and we all, I think, agreed that we need to do more to reach out to not just our three communities, but also to the sending towns, and do more with print media, and do some more press releases. And so we're going to focus on some of our signature events and make sure we get our good news out there. So that was broadly what we did at our first meeting, and I think we're meeting again in, in two weeks. Okay?
Good. All right, we'll move on to new business and updates. Oh, I'm sorry, John, I missed you.
I wanted to, I wanted to ask Mike something, possibly about the curriculum. In the lead-up to, to ag, one of the benefits that was described was that our regular curriculum, or the core, or the regular classes, would have a larger, larger population in the, in the, in the, in the electives. And I also know that the ag portion has electives. And I'm, and I know it's kind of early to tell, but we could potentially end up with maybe 40, 40 or better in-district students. I'm wondering, is there any planning as to how they're going to be able to participate in the regular curriculum electives and, and the ag electives? And I think, I think, you know, my concern is that we're not going to end up being able to offer as many electives in the regular curriculum.
John, there's a couple, I think, answers to your, to your question. First of all, as you know, the, the cohort that we have primarily are freshmen, and it's, it's not typical for freshmen or sophomores to, to take a lot of electives. They just don't have room in their schedule, they're fairly programmed in terms of requirements, course requirements for freshman and sophomore year. So we have a little bit of time, not a lot of time, but a little bit of time before they're looking at electives. And then furthermore, as agri science students in a, in a program, they have specific electives that they're required to take as being part of that, that program. So while they certainly have access to other electives, I think it might be more limited for them than the typical Chapag student who's not part of the agri science program. Am I, am I correct so far?
So far, you're doing very well. So John, you're, there are prescribed courses that they need to take, and taking in the pathways, it does start to define some of their schedule choices. They still have some limited opportunities to, to make some of those decisions, which is also one of the reasons why we're trying to find, or we're creating AP Environmental Studies classes, because we want to make certain that if that's their interest, and they want to take AP classes. But to say to you, is there potential where we're going to lose some of the students who would have taken computer science, there, there may be. So it's a question of what they choose to do with their scheduling, but this is their elective classes, so it is the 20% of their day, so.
And I think, I, I think there is definitely room for, for overlap between the agri science students and, and the Chapag students. So for example, AP Biology is something that many of our students have taken advantage of for, for many years now. I would imagine that the numbers are going to go up with our agri science students. It's a, it's a typical elective that they would be interested in, that they would probably have their teachers reinforcing that this is something that you should probably be doing. If you're thinking of veterinary science, it makes sense to take AP Biology. So I think certain electives, though, to give you an example of maybe one that hasn't seen the numbers, that might be more like AP Chem, which in the past is really, we, we've really struggled as an institution, I think, to offer that. I think we're going to have a little bit more safety with our agri science students. Some of them might, might be able to take AP Chem, I'm hoping. So that, 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 the numbers that we're able to offer, rather than sending students to VHS, which has often happened when we've had really, really low numbers, now we might have a few more students, junior and senior year, that I'm hoping that those courses we can offer in-house on a more regular basis.
All right, so we'll now go on to new business and updates, the enrollment update, Megan?
This is an easy update to give. There were no changes from the September 30th, but I did want to make certain, because we know it really is the October 1 deadline, and this is the October 1 enrollment, so please know what we presented to you on September 30th had no changes the following day, but we did want to make certain that that was cemented in. So if there are any questions, that is, that is what we have on hand.
Okay, very good. Now on to the agri science update, program?
So to give you a quick update with some of our recruitment efforts, because I know that is something that we're always looking at. So, so far, the following schools have already had their visits from us. We've been to Danbury, Westside Academy, we've been to Roger Park, we've been to Brookfield Middle School, we've been to New Milford, and we've been to Newtown Middle School. So we still have those, some that are still forthcoming. It is one where at this time, we've also added our marketing. We had a poster that we showed you in the past, that actually went to all of the guidance counselors' offices and the schools that are sending schools. We do have, again, we were putting a push towards some of the, our Ramsey Hall and our local schools, Washington Montessori, actually, I was able to talk to Carney O'Brien, who is the head of Washington Montessori, and actually, what she's asked is if she herself can come and take a tour and see what her parents experienced, so that way, when she's helping to market us, she actually has that firsthand account. So I appreciate those locally who are still promoting us and our program. So to say there's belief behind us, I, I appreciate that. So schools that we have that are forthcoming, we will go to New Fear Fields on October, well, that says, October 22nd, so that's tomorrow. Danbury, Broadville Middle School, we will be seeing them shortly. We have Sherman, and then we have Emmanuel Lutheran in Danbury. So we are going to some of the private schools, Catholic schools. And so, again, we're continuing to work on our schools, we're going, there's additionally, there are some fairs that we go to. So Lloy Travato, Peter Lawler, and Rachel Murray have all been frequenting some of those as well. So a lot of work being done with recruiting. So any questions with recruiting before I go forward?
So I don't know if this is the time to talk about recruiting, but just, I, I had a really great conversation with a, a parent whose child is in the ag program, ag program, is a freshman. And she attends, she comes from Danbury, and they're thrilled, like, just over the moon thrilled, so happy. She takes a two-hour bus ride to get here every morning, and a two-hour bus ride home. And that's a huge concern. So I just, for me, I just think that's a huge commitment, and I just wondered if there's a way that we could have a conversation with Danbury to figure this out, because that certainly seems like a very long bus ride, two hours. So I just, that was a red flag for me, and, you know, and her daughter loves coming, so I don't think it's an issue, but I think it's going to be an issue at some point, and I think that, that's something we should really figure out.
That, that's good to know, so thank you for, for sharing. And we do, we, we want to make certain, we don't feel like a burden. And, you know, those are the moments in which the more that we make it appealing, and even when we're asking questions about athletics and who's on it, we want them to feel like this is home, that they have all of the opportunities they would. We know that there's going to be a commute, but the things that we can do to reduce the commute. We also know that there is a time in which, right now, I believe, Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, Danbury and Brookfield are working together with their bus transportation, is that correct? Okay. And so I know that's happening right now, as they're balancing their Nanawog bus and their Chapag bus. I don't know if that's a factor, but we can certainly ask that question, because we really would like to be a favorable option and, and not have it where that's, we want no reason to complain. We want to only have, you know, the, the showcase of really positives. So hearing that, we can have the conversation, I don't know what we can do, but it's worth exploring. So thank you for bringing that up.
Megan, I was wondering if you could just give us a quick overview of recruitment efforts this year as, as compared to the same time last year? I know you, it sounds like you're, you're definitely expanding the, the venues that, that you're, you're trying to recruit at, maybe some of, some more private schools like Montessori that you mentioned, and maybe even kind of unique venues like the fairs. But what else are you doing differently this year as opposed to last year?
Those are the things that are happening differently. I also think that we have more agri science voices that are happening and being heard, so I think that's happening. But we are keeping along the same timelines, we want to make certain, we had success with the recruitment. So not trying to overhaul anything, but tweaking around the edges, where, where were the little bumps that we could find in order to make certain that we're, we're promoting, but we had a lot of success with our last one. But now putting in posters, getting out more brochures, we didn't have those brochures. Our next thing that we need to do, and we just talked about, our housewarming, it's going to also be to open up our school. I do have to say that there have been some, when construction is delayed, it stops us from being able to have people come and see our program. And so those are things in which some of the marketing is challenged by that, but we are certainly working around by talking about it, by having our students present, by having the conversations, but we'd like to be able to have something a little bit more physical, and that, I think, is forthcoming.
And that, that was actually a, a question that I had about the student involvement. I, I know it probably would be impossible to, to have our students kind of be ambassadors as part of the recruitment process. Yes, or am I wrong about that? Are you thinking about actually having them?
Much like when we had our student up here, we, we do, we take them on, on the road.
Okay, so they're going with you, so that is a, a change.
And so, even if they're not, we're certainly showing their visuals of what's happening when we've got the slideshow. So we have a lot more, the conversation shifts from what will be to what is.
Right.
But I still think, there's still a lot of what will be that's coming out in the conversations.
And I don't want to minimize, I think, live, the opportunity for students to answer questions to a live audience, if they were willing to do that, that, that's phenomenal. Is there a way electronically for, for somebody, let's say you're a, a Danbury parent, and your child was sick on the day that you happened to be out presenting, and they saw the poster up, or they heard about it through word of mouth, and they had questions. I mean, right now, if they went to the Chapag website, is there something specific to agri science that we already have up and running?
Oh, yes.
Oh, great.
If you look, it, it's one of the tabs, it's one of the first things you're going to see up at the top. We've also talked about even in all, and I'm not to detour, but even in all of our marketing, with the tuition in, we're trying to make it more accessible, where you click something, if you want, you know, we're trying to figure out how to get scheduling tours right onto our website. Same thing with agri science, so this way, you know, if we can get people, we want to make certain that we look accessible. Additionally, if somebody is absent, I can tell you, Lloy Travato is making those personal phone calls to them. I've answered phone calls from parents, and they're usually very surprised about how accessible we are, and they feel like there's a lot of that personal touch, which has been very helpful in our, in our recruitment efforts. That's what we are about Chapag, we are relationships. And so that's something that we continue to promote with agri science, so.
Well, thank you, because it sounded like you were being very modest before. It sounds like you're doing a lot more than you were initially saying compared to last year. Thank you.
Yes, and that's a credit to, to the people who are working the program. So again, we're, we're quite proud. So in talking with, as you've got in your packet, the update for our agri science program. So in talking with, as you've got in your packet, the update for our agri-science program, and this is again with the highlight, our, our building remains in yellow, and some of the things that Greg talked about is the very reason that it remains in yellow. But right now, as far as some of our achievements, we talked about the posters that were delivered to our sending schools, our agri-science parents' sky brochures have been printed, they now go to the, the conventions that Lloyd Travato's going to, we have, we're putting that out into the community, we want to make certain that parents have the right information as they're trying to guide their students. Additionally, we talked about recruitment efforts that are occurring at the sending schools, and now, as we are still creating the area for our large animals, we have small animals that are coming in. I know that Nicole is working to expedite some of the special cages, but everything I don't want in my home is coming to Chapog, so these little furry creatures, the little slithering snakes, but I can tell you, kids are excited, we've got some sugar ferret thing coming, but it's one, there you go, all of those things. But I can tell you, and I, I say this in jest, really, every animal is right now chosen by our students who are in the agri-science program. They are designing their program as it's happening, so to say, and I joked when I say, you know, the sugar ferret, but the sugar, that was something they were interested in, and so to know that we are getting these animals because that's what they're interested in, and being at the, the threshold of this, where you get to pick and design what animals you're working with, is a very exciting thing for our students, so please know those are happening. Additionally, all of the setbacks, we have nothing in this is programmatic, as far as, you know, curriculum or anything, however, it is stopping us from moving forward with certain things. So whereas our greenhouse was scheduled to be turned over, it's been delayed another week, so we're, we're ready to pounce on whatever area they open and tell us is ready to go, we are right in, right behind them, so it's just a matter of it's being turned over to us. Building A, we talked about, it was scheduled to be turned over in September, but due to some electrical redesign and some glass issues coming in, we're waiting for us to, to be able to go into that mechanics area. That said, our students, who are absolutely wonderful, have even said, we'll put together any of the equipment coming in, they're really hungry for those experiences, and we appreciate that, but we want to give them those experiences. And the, the good news is, is that we know when we finally turn it over, it is a superior product, and Greg has made certain that the amps, that even as we're looking at it, that we have the appropriate infrastructure to have those dynamic lessons. Building F continues to be the bane of our existence, but can tell you that right now, if you have not gone out and seen the structure itself, it is massive, it is marvelous. What's going to be out there is going to be worth the wait, but they are making us wait at this time. But in the meantime, ONG has put an additional superintendent on the campus, two to three days a week in order to make certain, they're just focusing on Building F, so we have direct supervision happening right out there. And our temporary building turnout area, we're trying to work right now, ONG is creating more flattened areas, so that way, we don't have some of those pitches that we see, because right now, the area is not conducive for our horses to be out. Once our final building is up, it's going to be glorious, but we're still trying to figure out how to navigate through that, so those are some of the things that are happening. Greg will probably talk more about the building status, but please know, when we talk about our program and what we have to do, we're, we're waiting for those areas in order to really start to expand, in order to showcase. The other thing that I wanted to show is that we have had no change in our involvement from our last meeting, so I also think it's very important that we show that right now, you know, even with a long bus ride, they're sticking with us, that there's something that's wonderful that's occurring in our, in our classrooms, and I appreciate the efforts that are taken to make that happen. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Greg about the building.
Okay, the first thing I did notice while, while I was waiting to take the microphone again, was we do have a very extensive agri-science thing on our website, but the pictures need to be upgraded. Some of those buildings are a lot farther along, and I think it would look good, so we'll have to make sure we get those new pictures in. And let's see. Boy, we have been, we have been fighting the battle, but some good stuff is happening. The science classrooms and at both ends of the building that were to have rubber floors now have them, we're in the process of finishing up some of the work that was delayed in connection with floors, so that, that's moving along quite nicely now. As far as our main elements and where we are, on the outdoor riding ring, we expect construction to start on the 28th, next Monday on that, and that we expect completion around the 2nd of December, thereabouts, the end of November, early December. The thing that's been keeping us from getting that done are the huge quantities of dirt that have been piled there, which needed to go up to the upper athletic fields, and the problem we had there was we ran into ledge on the upper athletic field. That ledge had to be removed, one of the things we did to advance that is, the building committee said, well, what's holding you up? Well, we need, we need drainage calculations, because we have to amend drainage up there. And we said, that's fine and good, but why don't you start taking out the ledge? And so we don't know how much we're going to take out, we say, you know you're going to take out some, so start the process. So that advanced us a week and a half further than we otherwise would have been by getting them to start on that. They have now completed that, they have removed the ledge, they have put the drainage in place, they've got a, they're now bringing the subgrades up on one of the fields, one of the, one of the two soccer fields is pretty much, it's, it's dirt, it's ready, it's ready to be seeded, and the other one is, needs some subgrade work done before it will be there, so there, that's moving along quite nicely. I'm concerned that it's this late in the season, and we haven't, they haven't been grassed, so we're working on that. I suggested tonight they needed to consider sod. If they're going to get that down soon, it might just not all die in the winter, but, so we're working on that, but that, that's moving along. And that we expect that the, as the riding ring is complete, outdoor riding ring is completed, the turnout area will be completed as well. We're looking at all site work being completed, everything out there being completed by the 24th of December. They have done most of the asphalt paving that needs to be done, but there's still more to be done, all of that, I am assured, will be completed before the asphalt plants close in the first week of December. So if you don't complete it by when they close, there's no more asphalt, so they have to do that, they realize that, and they are, they are working on it, but a good bit of it's been done. A lot of the work in, in the back of this, the building here, there was a whole raft of cement and asphalt work that had to be done for a parking lot next to the plant sales. All of that concrete has been done, I think there's one little thing that has to be fixed, but all of that's been done, and asphalt paving will commence shortly over there, and that will include the, the ring around the back of the school, all the way around the back of the school for fire access over to somewhere over this area, where the, there are some dumpsters and storage facilities down there, so we'll have a good bit of that completed shortly. I'm sorry, too. All right, we expect that Building A will be completed eventually, but that date keeps changing because of the windows, but I think we're hoping on that, that we're going to have that sometime in early November. Building F is still more or less on track for delivery by the end of December, but I had some issues and concerns and doubts about that in terms of how fast things were proceeding, and as, and as a result of that, we've had the second superintendent brought on the site to try to do nothing but push that building, and I think that's critical, because if we don't push, it doesn't get done, it seems. So that's, that's part of what's going on. I think that on the science labs right back here that have to be finished, there appear to be no current issues, and we expect to have those by the first week in December, a CO, and access to those facilities. So we're, we're a little more than a month away, about five weeks away from having those facilities. So we, we're moving along, we're making progress. If you notice, in the front of the school, we now have the, the railing for the steps going down to the lower part of the parking lot, the fences have been installed along the front, and the decorative stone base has been installed there, so that's, that's moving along, and we've, we've had a fair amount of landscaping done in the front of the building and on the sides, but, and I, and the thing that, the thing that blew me away is, when they did that landscaping and removed all the old gross landscaping, it made the existing building look massively better than it used to look. And I think that's, that was the big takeaway for me, is, is when you get your, we really need to focus on our landscaping. I think if we keep our landscaping up and keep it at an attractive level, even if it means less landscaping and more grass, that area just looked, the whole front of the school looks terrific. Yes? It's nice that it's landscaped and you can now see it. The trailer? You know, tell me about that, that's something.
The trailer, they're going to be removing the trailer, they're going to actually, we're going to move them to some offices inside, so that way, we can kind of start to creep away, so I don't want anybody to think the illusion of less is, is that, you know, it's going away, we're absorbing them in, but it's also when we can start working on that area when we clean it up, too, so that will be happening within the next few weeks.
All right, see, that's what happens when you miss your usual Friday meeting because of being out of town. Mike?
I, I actually don't mind the simplicity of the landscaping, and, and I think the other great aspect to that is, as our agri-science students are moving up in grade level, maybe we could have opportunities for them to get some practical, real, real-world experience right here on our campus, we don't even need them to leave.
Well, yeah.
I think, and additionally, just, just so you know, because, because this is 23 agricultural, you know, learning, they're going to be doing this on a cat, you know, format, so this way, they're actually designing that virtual, so they can take and they can overlay what is the Chapog landscape, and start to create those designs virtually before they then put it into place. So to know that we'll also be able to get the visual in advance, this is where we're taking our students, so to say that that's all in the making, but I can say that it's also one that Greg has been great about also saying, like, here's, here's where we can leave some, leave some room for learning.
I, I didn't think you were going to give them a bunch of seed packets and shovels and say, go to it, kids.
We've done things like that before, don't we?
No, as a matter of fact, we actually have a design for those areas that have not been more extensive in landscape, and we're going to have to decide if we really want to put it in. You know, there's a limit to what you should do. Now, here's one thing that's driving everyone crazy, and that is the generator. I don't know if you've noticed the generator, if you haven't noticed it, you must be blind, because the thing is gigantic. I, I mean, it sits way up there out of the ground, it sits on top of a, a tank of diesel fuel that is sufficient to run the generator for three days, in the event that the power goes out on Friday after all of the custodians have left. We want to make sure that if there's a Monday holiday, we don't walk into a building that's frozen, and so that, that's a gigantic tank under that thing, and there's just no way to make it pretty, and there's, there's almost no way to really cover it, because you, you would need mature trees that are, you know, more than 20 feet high in order to have a chance at that, and the other problem is, it's on a pad site that's not all that big, so we could put in, and there have been several plans advanced, an enormous number of plants to try to block it, but the problem with that is, Don can't get in there to trim those, and so then what you end up with is really shaggy landscaping. And so we're, we're actually taking a fourth round of comments now, where we're trying to finalize that, and I think it's, again, how can we soften it? We are not going to make it disappear, how can we soften it to make sure that 12 months of the year it looks reasonable and doesn't look horrible? You know, if you're into generators, it's an attractive generator, but if you're not, it's, it's, you know, it isn't, and unfortunately, there you go, there's the problem. I mean, personally, I think that in about six months, no one will even see it, because, you know, it's funny how what you ignore after a while, things become part of the background, and that's the most optimistic report I can give you on the landscaping for the generator, but. Well, we could, you know, and interestingly, Building A, when you, when you see Building A completed, you're going to walk into the shops, the three shops, and you're going to say, how come they didn't finish this? How come the walls are concrete block painted? How come all the electrical and other infrastructure is visible? And the answer is, it's designed that way, and so there is sort of an industrial chic look there, and this would continue it right outside, well, they, they better like it. The, the other thing of great import that I have been told is, is that the rock, the Chapog rock, is now in its permanent location, and it's not ready to paint yet, so don't, it's not, it's quite in its original location, because its original location is now, something else is there. Yeah, it's either a parking lot, or maybe that's where the generator is, but, and you know, the generator, we thought the rock was big, the generator really makes, you'd need the rock like 10 times as big to equal the generator. Somebody asked, somebody suggested a mural tonight, and that was, clearly, Mr. McNauton was not here for the day of the mural that used to prevail in Chapog, and we had some real doozies, but no, I think we're going to avoid painting the generator, we're going to try to make it disappear by not doing anything to it, but the rock will soon be, it's not quite available yet, but at some point in time around the beginning of the year, the rock will be available for student, students again. But it has not been removed from the site or cracked or damaged, it is pretty much the way it was. They're going to have to do a little bit of landscaping at the base, because it's sitting, more of it's sitting out of the ground than used to, so we'll have to work on that, so. No comment. So I know it's frustrating, believe me, no one's more frustrated than me that everything isn't done like early, but we're going to get there, and it's going to be magnificent. So, yes, Mary?
I cannot, I can never remember. The housewarming that we're having is not the open house that, that we will have in January?
The grand opening that we're going to be doing, which, at this point, we're looking more towards springtime, that's going to be something very different, and that's going to be full community, probably looking more towards what would be a school day, so that way, we could also have the students involved with it as well. That, that will be a very, very big celebration. This is more people who are curious, providing an opportunity to see where we are in it. People have invested a lot of time and energy into it, and so this is to also show them where all of the efforts have gone into, and, you know, give a little bit more faith and credibility in some of our actions that are happening.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we, we really wanted to have certain things completed, more completed than they were, and we will. We'll have a lot of items in the existing, the new spaces we've already taken possession of, there were a few things missing, like the, the baseboard molding, so that, that was stuck with the rubber ore, and that's now here, and so that, that'll be all finished, and so it'll be a more finished look to things, we just wanted to make sure that was there before we opened the building up, so that's, that's more or less where we are. So that's the end of my report, are there any other questions? Otherwise, I will turn it over to Nicole to give us the, the dollars.
Since our last meeting, the building committee did approve application 14 for $3.6 million plus some soft cost invoices, so we did disperse about $3.8 million last Friday from my office. ONG has submitted application 15, which the building committee will be reviewing at its next meeting in early November. We are about 70% paid out on the project to date, and we have a payment pending for reimbursement from the state of Connecticut for just over $6 million.
Yes. Alex?
When do you anticipate the state money will arrive?
This most recent draw, the end of November, they issue around the 25th or 26th of the month.
Okay, thank you.
So.
I'd like to ask another question about the state money, and, and I, I also was reminded of this when I saw the enrollment. Can you walk us through the process for the ag grant dollars? Do you submit the enrollment to the State Department of Education, or?
Yes, so we file a report, every school in the state files a report that's due October 1 called the PSIS Report, and it's the list of students who attend your district, and we list our agri-science students on that report, and then that report is sent to Harold Mackin at the Department of Education with a sign-off from our program director and our principal, that is an excerpt from that report that lists our agri-science students, and he processes that, processes that for the state payment, and Harold is in the same office that we've been working with throughout on our construction grant as well.
And those are quarterly payments?
No, the state pays us once annually the following year.
Oh, it's one payment, okay. Thanks.
Okay, other questions on the financial report? Okay, other questions on the financial report? Alright. Well, uh, I guess we will move now on to action items. We've already done action item number one. So we'll move on to action item number two. Do I have a motion to consider, uh, to, well, to approve, uh, the annual Model United Nations Conference trip to Boston, Massachusetts for grades 10 to 12 on January 30 to February 2nd, 2020? Second? So we have some discussion about it. Do you have anything to tell us? I mean, we've done this before, annual.
Other than to say very spectacular things, I, it becomes a defining moment.
It becomes a defining moment in a lot of our Chapag students', um, high school career. Uh, it is something that they highlight on the college applications. Um, I, I cannot say enough wonderful things about it. It is Chris Dennis who continues to work with our students. So I, this is something I strongly endorse.
You know, it's funny, I had read an article, uh, in, in the, uh, in, in the, in the, one of the, I think it was the New York Times. And there was a lot, there were a lot of posts associated with that article about the issue of whether or not debate was, you know, having a debate team was a very valuable thing in a high school. And what I've said is, well, that's kind of a monopoly, because the idea is that debate forces you to take a hard position on something as opposed to coming to the middle. And, you know, it's not that we, we can only do one thing. And Model UN is an opportunity, I think, to really see what it's like to work with other views and to come to consensus on programs and things. And so what, what, what I would respond to those, those people is, is you have to see the total high school program and the variety of things that, that our kids do. And I think this is a very important program, so I, I, I strongly urge people to vote for it. So, um, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? That's it? It's unanimous? We'll move on to policies. Uh, we've got, uh, four policies here tonight. Uh, the first one is policy number 3320 on purchasing procedures. Nicole, Nicole, you've been that active in these, uh, you know, Alex, I'll, I'll defer to you, but if, do you want Nicole to go take us through these or?
Um, this policy, it does look like there's a lot of red on the page. We didn't change it drastically, we just updated it, um, to be more in line with, um, actual practice. The one difference in this policy that I'm requesting is, um, in addition to using purchase orders and contracts as a method of procurement, um, I would like to add the use of a purchase card, which is, um, a relationship that we'll interenter with a bank, very much like a credit card bank. And it will allow the district to have a relationship whereby we can issue purchase orders to that bank, who will then process a credit card transaction for us to purchase, um, supplies and goods, which we can't do right now. We don't have the ability to purchase by credit card. And, um, with online purchasing and all of the things that are available, um, to our teachers now, that can sometimes create a hiccup in them getting the supplies they want in a timely fashion. So the addition of the purchase card transaction, um, as a method to procure would help us to meet, um, our teachers' requests more timely.
Nicole, I have a question for you. Does, does this mean that we might actually, in some cases, be able to get better pricing on things? Because we have the ability to, to use this system?
Yes.
And, and, and the companies that don't take POs, now they don't have to, they can take a credit card.
They will take the credit card that's backed by our PO, correct?
So this will actually be valuable to us in many ways. That's excellent. Uh, Jim? Yeah, I, I think we approve it for a first reading, uh, unless anyone thinks it's controversial, we'll go to the, uh, the consent agenda. Okay, it's moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded. Uh, further discussion? Does anyone think this is controversial and needs to go to be heard again by us, or can we just put it on to the consent agenda? Okay, good. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? That's it, it's unanimous. Now we'll move on to policy 3430, audits, and, uh, I would ask that perhaps you want to do this one as well, Nicole?
I'm just pausing for a moment because I think they've, it's flipped on the agenda.
Oh, wait a minute.
No, it looks like Nicole, it, because it does say it's the 3430, but then it says it's a periodic financial report. So it looks like our agenda has swapped the two titles on the policies. So the policy, uh, 3430 should be about quarterly bank statements and 3434 is about the audits. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
So why don't we do 3434?
Okay, so we updated 3434 in accordance with Cabe's recommendations. There's nothing, um, new or unique to Region 12 that we've added. Um, and it conforms basically to the policy that we already had, just updating some of the language that Cabe has suggested districts incorporate into their policy.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve this? Jim? Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Does anyone think this is controversial and needs to go back for consideration by us? Hearing nothing? Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? That's approved unanimously. Now we'll move on to 3430.
So this policy is actually new to the board. Um, we did not have this policy previously. And it's Cabe's recommendation of an optional policy to comply with the new statute that requires us to post our financials quarterly, both, um, on the district's website and directly to our towns. The change that you can see we made in the red line is to reflect that we'll distribute to our towns instead of, um, the sole municipality because we are a region. There's been a lot of talk, um, in the Casbo community about what exactly that statute means and what form they expect those quarterly reports to be in. So as we continue to develop those, we may need to tweak this policy in the future. But for now, this is the optional policy that Cabe is recommending until we can get a better idea of, um, what the state's expectation for those quarterly reports is. Um, I will be sharing with the Finance and Operations Committee at our next meeting in early November, what I'm proposing as our quarterly format. And we will, um, to the extent that the committee adopts that format, that's what we'll use until we get better direction. Um, if there is something different that the state does want to see on those reports.
Okay, uh, is there a motion? Jim? Was there a second? Moved and seconded. Uh, does anyone feel this is a controversial policy that needs to come back to us again? Or can we just let it go to the, uh, consent agenda? Hearing no, no one, uh, will let that happen. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? That's done. Uh, also unanimously approved. We'll move on to poli, proposed policy 3542.45 on vending machines.
Sure.
Moved and seconded. Um, I, I think on this vending machine policy, this is not an instance of the board going into the minutia of, we're gonna regulate vending machines. So much is vending machines become important because they raise issues on what can be sold in them to meet school nutritional guidelines and issues. And so this is something that's, that becomes critical for us to make sure that we dovetail this properly with our, our compliance with those guidelines. And that's the primary reason for it. Does anyone have any further comments on it? Been moved and seconded. I take it no one thinks this is controversial, but if they do, please feel free to speak up? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? We've got our vending machines. Okay, the next item on our action item is to establish a graduation date for the Chapag class of 2020.
Lots of twenties going on here. Um, so the new legislation that was passed allows boards of education to establish the graduation date, uh, after the 180th day that was originally scheduled for schools to end. Um, and so on the 180th day, you can have your graduation. And the reason that the state did this is because they recognized that this is a, this is a monumental moment for students. And a lot of times family members are flying in and having to book plane tickets and schedule and coordinate, uh, you know, lodging. And so therefore they wanted to allow families more time to do such. And so whereas in the past, we've always been able to tentatively set what was gonna be our graduation and then we firmed it up after the fact, once we knew we'd gotten through our winter season, et cetera. Um, the state is now giving a little bit more leeway. And we will, as, uh, Mike had mentioned during the curriculum report, we will bring to you a policy in order to reflect the new legislation. But at this time, given everything that we have, um, before us, my recommendation, um, is to have, the last day of school right now is on a Monday, um, if Mother Nature is kind to us. And so my recommendation would be to have that following Saturday be our graduation date. So my recommendation to the board is to have the graduation set for Saturday, June 20th, 2020. Come on, work with me.
Okay, there's, the, Jim has moved it, is there a second? Is there any discussion of June 20, 2020? It's a little bit on the late side for graduation, but. But you should get better weather.
It's me. I move the graduation to be June 20, 2020.
Okay. Moved and seconded? Was it seconded? Yeah, okay, moved and seconded. Uh, alright, unless there's further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. Uh, all those in favor of establishing the graduation date of June 20, 2020? Uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? It is June 20, 2020. The last item on action items is to consider, if appropriate, approve two student representatives with no voting rights on, on, on the Board of Education to share updates of Chapag. Do we, I guess we probably, to do this in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, someone should make a motion so we can get it on the table. And then we can, we will, we will have some discussion of it, so. Is there a motion to? Yeah, actually, you know what, I'm gonna hold off on it. I'll tell you why I want to hold off on that. Um, I think we need to know a little bit more about the concept. I mean, I, I would assume, for example, that these students, because of privacy regulations, are not allowed to attend executive sessions of the board. Uh, that if they're student representatives, they're really representatives to the board, they're not members of the board. Uh, and so that, that needs to be clarified as, as well. And then, uh, I would take it that, um, that, uh, these people would have the opportunity to, to be recognized and speak at meetings. And so that's something you should, you should take into consideration when you do this. Um, and so, and maybe you want to talk more about it, Megan?
I think Greg covered a, a lot of, I, I, I think a lot of times we talk about the students and their experience. I'd rather have the students share with us their experience. And by having them here at the board and having them share some of the updates, having you know when they've got things that are exciting them, you know, finals that are coming up, things that are happening, asking them questions, having them weigh in on, on certain conversations. They would have no voting rights. They would not be allowed in executive session. They are honorary, uh, board members who would sit at the table. Um, at that point, we would, my thought in conversation was we would have one junior and one senior. So this way we are always building who would be the next person coming up. They've been trained. It gives our students a voice at this table. It, it cre- creates more context over some of our conversations. You know, here I'm talking to you about things that are happening with agri-science. I'd rather have you hear from the students what it's like. We're talking about the cafeteria as if we're the ones eating there versus if we could turn and look to, to students and say, what's that feel like, you know, to know that this is, you know, something that's happening to them. I think they're a valuable voice that right now I feel is missing at the table. I think you represent them admirably, admirably. But I think that's been something that I have been lacking at board meetings.
Just a question on the practical nature of it. So if you're a student and you have exams and homework and you have a board of ed meeting that goes till 10 or 11 at night, is it? So would it be just, so they wouldn't have attendance requirements, they wouldn't have to stay till the end? They sort of just come when they can and when it's appropriate for them?
We would try to balance it where they would come, we'd put them early on for a lot of the speaking, as far as updates. If there's something that we felt they could weigh in on, we could certainly have them do such. But no, my expectation is, um, we would not have them stay till the very end. Um, but I think that getting the updates and having them for some of these things, uh, we would establish early on what would be appropriate for them for the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Alex mentioned. Um, two questions. Uh, one, well, one, one observation. Technically, a student can be here right now if they wanted to be, right? In the audience.
They, they could be in the audience, however, they would not have the opportunity to speak as we do.
Well, for, uh, members of the public, th- they would have an opportunity to speak on anything that's on the agenda.
Right, as far as a public comment, but I think to have two regular students who are here and interacting with you, I think is appropriate.
What do, is this a novel idea or do a lot of, uh, schools do this?
I'm not unique enough to think that this is, is a great idea for me. No, this is something that's in practice in a number of districts and I think it brings value and, and talking to other board members from other communities, they have found value in the conversations that are offered.
And my final question, I assume they would not be on any of the committees? Thank you.
Uh, just to show you how novel it isn't, um, sometime, you know, I went to, I went to high school in the Fairfax County, Virginia public school system. And sometime in the, the early 1970s, uh, they, uh, decided that they would have a, an elected, fully voting member of the school board would be a student from, from one of the schools. And we had an elected member of the school board who was elected by the students in, basically in the school system. There were, I think at the time, 22 high schools in that system. Uh, and in those days, they could participate in everything because there were no privacy regulations. So, uh, I mean, many of the high schools, mine included, had a student on the discipline committee where they would make decisions. They would be there to represent students in making decisions of discipline in the department. All of these things basically got wiped out with the privacy regulations that were put in because it made it impossible to have someone other than a member of the school, uh, you know, an employee of the school be involved in these kind of things. But school board membership is not unusual for students. Jim?
Yeah, Megan, you may have already answered this by your comments, but I wonder, what is the genesis of this suggestion? Is it from you or is it, has any of the students approached you that this is something they would like to do?
Uh, no, this is purely selfish.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Megan, I have a question, which is, uh, how are these people gonna be selected?
Right now, my thought was, is at this point, it would be something that is, uh, selected by teacher recommendation. At this time, if it is something that we find is in high demand, we can certainly, you know, do a vote such as we do for any of our, um, you know, student cabinet officers. So, but for right now, my recommendation is, as we start early on, is to have it be teacher recommendation.
John?
I, I wholeheartedly support this. Uh, it would be great insight to even some of the things that we discussed tonight about the, the lunch, the, uh, you know, the, um, the trips, the, uh, the curriculum, constructive criticisms about a lot of things that we do. So, um, yeah, I, I think it's very pertinent.
Jim?
I don't necess, I don't necessarily disagree with what's been said, I just concerned about the length of these meetings. If students are commenting on every item that comes before the Board of Education. So I think it's something you need to keep in mind.
Well, we'll definitely keep that in mind. Hopefully they'll be less verbose than their adult counterparts on the board.
Mike? Can I just ask two quick questions, Megan? Were you thinking then that the student, let's say, who's a junior ex officio member of the, uh, of the board, would they stay for a two-year term then? So they'd move up? And, and assuming that we do approve the idea, are you thinking for this year or are you thinking for next year starting?
I, I would entertain it based on the board's appetite. For me, I, I would get them here yesterday if it was up to me, but it's one in which, um, to recognize how the board is comfortable. We'd obviously have to do something, we're working with the recommendations, talking to families. They can certainly prepare them, so, um, I, I'm thinking at this point, best guess, if this is something that the board does have a, an interest in, we're probably looking at the first, um, meeting of 2020.
I- is there any sense that you want to ca, you want to categorize this as a trial policy, just so we don't? Or, or you want to commit whole hog and, and be in it? We, we may need a specific. We may need a specific policy of the board in order to implement it.
Question, oh, I'm like, I'm like you. I, I wasn't, I, I think the idea of a pilot is always something that I welcome so that way we can see how it goes. And if it's something that we find is either taxing on the students or impeding the action that the board's able to take. And certainly, we would have to make other arrangements. But as far as a policy and what is, because they're non-voting, I, I don't know that it'd be anything other than a practice. And the board chair is allowed to invite who they want to sit at the table, so that would fall to you.
All right, well, to quote Roy Scheider's character in Jaws, you're going to need a bigger table. You're going to add two people to it, so something to consider. Yeah. We'll have to take a pause here for a moment. Don't talk about business. Okay, I'm sorry, we're going to go back to the meeting now that we're, we're taped up again. Okay, so is there any further discussion on this issue of school board? If we're going to truly make this a student thing, I don't know if the person should be elected by adults. I'm thinking that, you know, if we're really going to try to empower them, that maybe they should choose who represents them. And now for the teacher's perspective, Mike?
As a class advisor for a number of years, I think that's a really, really bad idea. We, we, we try to encourage students to be mature, especially as they're exercising voting rights. But often, as we know from really bad Hollywood sitcoms, it, it devolves very quickly into a popularity contest. Or I once had a, a senior class president who was kind of put in there as a joke from his fellow students. But the joke was often on me because I had to do all the work. And I don't think that we need the joke to be on the board. I think we, you know, I, I would totally trust the faculty to select a student who's mature enough to handle being here, would, you know, hopefully present diverse views. So we've got two members, so maybe if one is really involved in athletics, we can have somebody who's involved in other activities. And, you know, as a, as a teacher, you're always trying to, to spread the wealth, so to speak. I don't think we want to have the student who's already the student body president necessarily to be our representative here too. Let's, let's build leadership in as many kids as we can.
Okay. Anything further on this? All right, I think if we have a motion, it might, it needs to be sort of carefully worded. Because we, what we would be doing is if we would be approving the appointment of two student representatives to the Board of Education. Not members of the Board of Education, but two student representatives to the Board of Education with no voting rights. Ex officio implies more status, I think you're, you're ready to parcel out here. But I, that's my only concern, is that we do it carefully so that we have not created something that violates our regional plan, for example. Because you're talking about... Okay. John?
Maybe somebody could follow up with the school districts that have them and see how they're chosen. I know Danbury has student reps.
Have we, by the way, and have we, have we passed this by council? No, no, I just want to, no, I just am concerned that we, you know, that we, because Lord knows, we have a much litigated regional plan, and we want to make sure that we have not fallen foul of it in any way, shape, or form. Because I, I don't think, we're not, we're not creating student members of the board. We're not, we're not, they don't have any voting rights, they're really representatives of the students to the board. And the expectation should be, there should be expectations, they should be expected to attend meetings. And I think, you know, we generally are out of here relatively early these days. I, you know, we haven't, since we imposed the 10 o'clock deadline, we've never had a meeting go past 10. And in fact, a lot of them barely seem to go past 9 now. And with any luck, that's going to continue. So I don't think we have to worry about students being here too late. But I don't want to, if we're going to have some value in this, I don't want to be suggesting this is something you should, they should approach casually. And does anybody else feel differently? I mean...
And I don't, I'm not, I think we're overthinking this a little, for me personally, I feel like we're overthinking this a little bit. I, I, I think we're not giving them power. We're not letting them vote, they're not coming into the executive sessions. They're, they're, they're having a seat at the table to give us insight and their perspective, which I agree with John, I think would be greatly beneficial to all of us. And I, pilot program, I just, I just think that they're welcome. If we, and I trust Megan, I trust her faculty, they're going to pick two wonderful representatives who probably will contribute more than we would ever in a million years imagine. And I just, I really do think we're overthinking this, so.
I just think we, we, adding to your motion that you have to put in that there'll be privacy issues, they will not be able to be here for, like executive sessions or anything else that has to do with, with staff or the kids. Right, that's true.
Yeah, what the, the real status is, is you are putting, you are allowing them on to the dais, you are allowing them to participate in discussions, which is something that the public doesn't get to do. Also, there's, there's give and take with them. You can have give and take back and forth, which is not something we allow ourselves to do with the public. So this is, you know, this is definitely a, a seat at the table. Look, I think it's a great idea, I'm 100% in favor of it, I just want to make sure we do it correctly, that's all. So I think if we were to word it as a motion to appoint, or the motion to approve the appointment of two student representatives to the Board of Education with no voting rights and who would be subject to all the appropriate privacy regulations and, and not able to participate in executive sessions. With that, is that enough? Does that get us there? So would someone like to move that now that Sue has taken it all down meticulously? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Two nays, abstaining. All right, chairman votes aye. So it's nine votes to two. Mary? All right. Good luck. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the meeting, I would, and no one objects, I would declare the meeting adjourned by consensus at 9:12. Thank you very much.